So now we are going to go into our 10:00 AM session. Agenda item number 64. For possible actions for -- do we need to change anything, Clerk? No, perfect. For possible action, any items from the 10:00 AM session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Councilwoman Seaman.
Madam Mayor, pro tem, the following items have been requested to be held in abeyance, withdrawn, tabled, or stricken. Session 10:00 AM discussion, items 70 and 71, SUP 77365 and SDR 77366, applicant owner, 900 Fremont LLC at 916 Fremont Street. Request for abeyance till the January 15, 2020. Meeting requested by Councilwoman Diaz. And item number 79, RQR-77463, applicant Las Vegas Billboards, owner Wild Decatur LLC at 1571 North Decatur Boulevard. Request for abeyance to the January 15, 2020, meeting requested by staff. And that will be my motion.
Thank you. Let's vote on -- let's vote and post. And that motion carries. Items number 65 through 69 may be considered in one motion, one vote, and are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items with no condition changes. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this portion of the agenda. Item number 65, RQR 77432, applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner SG Properties LLC, on a required review of an approved special use permit, U-0002-98, for a 55-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 845 West Bonanza Road, Industrial Zone, Ward 5, Creer. RQR 7745, applicant Clear Channel Outdoor, Inc., owner Willock Investments, Inc., on a required review of an approved special use permit, U-0176-90, for a 40-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 3591 East Bonanza Road, C1 Limited Commercial Zone, Ward 3, Councilwoman Diaz. RQR 77437, applicant Clear Channel Outdoor, Inc., owner Bell Real Estate LLC, on a required review of an approved special use permit, U-0103-95, for a 40-foot-tall, 12-foot-by-24-foot off-premise sign at 1910 Industrial Road, M Industrial Zone, Ward 3, Councilwoman Diaz. RQR-77464, applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner FCPT Restaurant Properties LLC, on a required review of an approved special use, U-0185-89, which allowed a 40-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 1361 South Decatur Boulevard, C1 Limited Commercial Zone, Ward, Councilman Knutson. 69, RQR-77486, applicant Clear Channel Outdoor, Inc., owner Becky Binion-Binhan, on a required review of an approved variance, V-0072-88, which allowed an existing 50-foot-tall, 12-foot-by-24-foot off-premise sign at 601 North Main Street, M Industrial Zone, Ward 5, Councilman Creer. Staff recommends approval on all items. These are all public hearings, which I now declare open. I'll ask the city clerk to set the timer at a minute per speaker for this and public hearing items this afternoon. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on items 65 through 69? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman Seaman may have a motion for one motion, one vote, items 65 through 69.
Madam Mayor, pro tem.
Yes.
Before you turn this over to Councilwoman Seaman, I just want to make a disclaimer that I'm an owner of an outdoor billboard company called Creer Outdoor Advertising. These are a number of outdoor companies. We do not compete with them in any of these, and there should not be -- there's no conflict of interest that I have, and I'll be voting on these.
Thank you, Councilman Creer.
Councilwoman Seaman.
Madam Mayor, pro tem, I move to approve one motion, one vote, items 65 through 69.
Thank you. Please vote and post. Okay. Great. Now we are on to agenda item 72. So 70 and 71 was abated or stricken, so we're on 72? Okay. I heard Councilman Creer down there helping me out here.
He's not listening.
I'm like, okay. So let me just be clear on items 70 through 77. Per planning -- Mr. Summerfield?
Yes, ma'am, Mayor, pro tem.
Is there an unresolved 10 alleyway between this development and the adjacent properties?
Mayor, pro tem? If I could, since we're going to have a discussion, could you read the items in first before we --
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Okay. Item 72, GPA-77367, on a request for a general plan amendment from PCD, Planned Community Development, and PF, Public Facilities, to M Medium Density Residential. 73 is Zone-77572, on a request for rezoning from U undeveloped, PCD, Planned Community Developed, and PF, Public Facilities, general plan designations to R-Th, which is single-family attached. 74 is the Ver-77701, on a request for a variance to allow non-standard private streets, which where such is required, substreets where a cul-de-sac or hammerhead is required, and a connectivity ratio of 1.03 where 1.30 is required. 75, Ver-77573, on a request for a variance to allow a 12-foot-tall retaining wall with a 6-foot-tall perimeter wall, where a 4-foot-tall retaining wall and a 6-to-8-foot-tall perimeter wall is the maximum allowed. 76 is VAC-77574, on a request for a petition to vacate U.S. government patent easements. 77 is the TMP-77575, on a request for a tentative map for a 336 lot, single-family-attached residential subdivision townhome. The applicant is Harmony Homes Nevada LLC, and the owner is United States of America on 30 acres at the northeast corner of Tropical Parkway and Pooley Road. U undeveloped zone, PCD, Planned Community Development, and PF, Public Facilities, general plan designations proposed are TH, single-family attached. The Planning Commission recommends approval on all of the items. Staff recommends approval on items 72, 73, and 76, and denial on items number 74, 75, and 77. These are in Ward 6, My Ward, and are public hearings, which I'm going to declare open now. Is the applicant present?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, the applicant is Larry Bitten with Hurox Engineers.
Hello.
Representing Harmony Homes.
Okay. Mr. Summerfield?
Madam Mayor, pro tem.
My question on this, because I know that we had, I believe, in planning, we abated KB Homes because there was a 10-foot alley. Is there a 10-foot alley with this project?
So Madam Mayor, pro tem, so one of the issues that was -- that is still of concern, although the applicant's ability to do anything with it are not -- are pretty minimal. On the eastern edge of this property, there is a 10-foot drainage easement, which will create, for lack of a nicer term, a no-man's land, because that easement is outside the perimeter wall of the existing apartment complex. So on the image that you see, we have an existing apartment complex. Outside of their wall, there's a 10-foot drainage easement. The property owner, the developer, when they come in and they put in their perimeter wall, it will create a 10-foot gap between the new perimeter wall from the Harmony Homes project to the perimeter wall of the existing apartment complex.
And how many feet? 10 feet by what?
It's 10 foot, and I believe it runs the length of the apartment complex. So it would be the full length of that eastern border, northeastern border of the subject property, as you can see on the screen in front of you.
So it's going to be literally right between the new development and the apartments?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so...
Can I add some clarifying information?
Absolutely.
Sure. We've met with staff in regards to that drainage easement, and our understanding is it's a private drainage easement owned by the adjacent site, or public drainage easement for public waters but privately maintained. And the advantage, what we're doing is we're shielding that drainage that is currently feeding that drainage easement. Now, after working with staff, we will be directing flows around our site to where we're no longer putting flows into that easement. And also along that west boundary of the site, there isn't a perimeter wall. It's just an open drainage easement. It goes into a small U-ditch, which is, from our records, show that that is on the apartment site's property. So it's a public drainage easement on their property privately maintained.
So Mr. Summerfield, can you just clarify? Was this abated at planning on December 10?
Stand by one second. I'll need to pull that up. Madam Mayor, pro tem, so this item went to Planning Commission actually on November 12, and it was passed unanimously. The Planning Commission had held it in abeyance. It looks like the general plan amendment to allow these other applications to catch up had been abated at the October 22 Planning Commission.
Okay.
But once the entire package was present at the November 12 meeting, I'm not showing that there was any additional abeyance at that time.
Okay. So sir, I would really like for you to come in my office and figure out. The thing that scares me with alleyways, and because we have another project, is creating an area for homeless encampment. Mr. Summerfield, have we had any issues right now in that area before building -- before this goes forth?
Madam Mayor, so as you saw in the one picture, there's clearly there's been signs that there's been some illegal dumping. I think there was a mattress there present on the site on the day that we went and took our site pictures. However, we do not have any records of any encampment activity occurring at this western edge of the city in this vacant area.
Okay. So have you been in my office?
We have, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And so we didn't --
The developer, we've met twice in your office.
Right. And so I thought we did, but I don't recall talking about this alleyway.
You know what? We haven't, because the issue hasn't been raised until I've just heard it now. And because we, in working with staff, that easement is on the adjacent property's site.
Right.
And their responsibility. And again, your concern about homeless, there isn't a wall in between the property line and the adjacent development, so it's open. There's not a place for people to gather and be hidden. Although there is, there's about a two-foot-high, essentially a concrete curb that captures water coming from the west and diverts it around or with through the apartment site. There's storm drains that go through. So it's not a hidden area, and it's not behind a wall. But we're happy to work through staff. We can...
So one of the things I have to tell you, I'm very concerned creating any alleyways. We've had an issue in a previous development that was built, and then D.R. Horton was building next to it, and so we had to really figure out. And now we have another issue to where there's another 10-foot alleyway. And going forth in the northwest, I just don't want all these alleyways created. So we have to come up with a conclusion of not letting that happen. So if you would be understandably, I would like to obey these items until our next council meeting and have... Yes.
Just before you do that.
Nope. Councilman Creer?
Just if I -- we haven't had public comment.
Yes. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Right, no worries. So before I do that, I just want to, before I open it to public comment, I just want to make sure that you are okay with coming and having -- I just want, before I approve anything, I really need to make sure that our northwest community is safe and everything's going to go as planned, because alleyways sometimes could be very dangerous.
Understood, understood.
Okay, so...
I just think if we had photos of that area, it'd be very clear that it's not an alleyway. There's not a separate area.
Okay. Mr. Summerfield?
So Madam Mayor, pro tem, so as he said, so it looks like there is some type of, and I apologize, my notes say that it's a wall, but it looks like maybe in the aerial photos that I'm looking at, that maybe it is some kind of, maybe low-rise fence or something there. As the applicant's representative has mentioned, it is not an alley. It is drainage, it is a drainage channel. However, I was just speaking with representation from Public Works, Mr. Anderson, and if, as the applicant has indicated, that their drainage study and their drainage plan for the site, and we'll need to look at it to make sure, but if they are in fact, the drainage will no longer go to this drainage easement, then there may be an opportunity for the property owner, and as the representative mentioned, the drainage easement is on the private property of the existing apartment complex, not on the Harmony Homes site. But there may be an opportunity, if the drainage easement is no longer required because of the work they're doing on their site, then it may be an option to talk to the apartment complex ownership and vacate that easement, and then reclaim that property and be able to secure it in a different way than it's currently secured. So that may be an option based on if in fact the drainage is no longer going to be using that channel from flows from the applicant's site. But again, that property is completely under the authority and care of that property owner, which is the apartment complex.
And that's the, and I have to tell you, I can't speak for them. I can't speak for the owner of the property if they're going to be willing to. And what I want to make sure we don't do is create an alley. So like on that back wall, where we're looking at that, I wouldn't want a block wall. So what might be acceptable is if we had like a three-foot retainer wall and then wrought iron. So this way, you can see through that, and no one is going to create dumping or hanging out in that alley. I mean, would you, I want to move this forward, but at the same time, I don't want the 10-foot alley to become an issue.
Sure. Perhaps we could have a condition where the developer would work with the adjacent property owner to remove the existing alley or the existing concrete gutter and not, I don't know how we word it, but not create an enclosed or a site with limited visibility in there. Because, I mean, we can't control what happens on the adjacent property.
Right. Yeah.
But we're happy to work with them, and we'll develop up to our property line and work with them on eliminating any unsafe or unsatisfactory condition along the property line.
Okay. So, Mr. Summerfield?
Madam Mayor, pro tem?
Can we create an amendment on that?
So I'm looking to see where we would put this. Because this is a tentative map, instead of a site development review, we typically do not have conditions related to the fencing. But if you'll give me, indulge me just a second so that I can pull up the map itself and see if they've, because they should have cross-sections that show the...
Something down here.
The walls. So I just want to see what they have on that side.
So just so you know, something underneath my desk is making a really weird noise. I hope I don't blow up. Okay.
I do have the tentative map.
Just hang on. Someone has to go under my desk. Thank you. Mr. Summerfield?
Madam Mayor, pro tem, so I'm looking at, and I just conferred with the applicant's engineer. So in the area that we're talking about, because of the grade change, they actually have a retaining portion of their wall that actually will be about anywhere from along this area, they're indicating anywhere from a 0 to a 12-foot retaining wall, and then with a proposed 6-foot wall above that. They are indicating on their plans that it is a view fence, so it is not proposed on the drawing currently as a masonry wall. So they are indicating a view fence, which I'm assuming is slatted so you can see through. That's why they're drawing it a view fence.
Correct.
So I think that achieves what you want, which is eyes to be on the drainage channel from the new property owners. However, just to be clear, based on what you originally had asked for, because of the grade changes, they will not be able to achieve that smaller retaining. They have potentially a pretty large retaining wall that they'll need to do on there. As far as a condition that, as the applicant had addressed, I think that can be a condition on the record in terms of he's made that commitment to you here on the record. Unfortunately, I do not have a place in the conditions of approval to place a condition like that, but staff would be happy to continue to work with your office, with the applicant, and with the neighboring property to figure out if there is the ability for them to reclaim that easement and possibly do a vacation in the future so that the apartment complex can maybe reclaim where that drainage easement is now and make that more usable for their residents even, based on the changes to drainage that will be occurring on the subject site.
Okay, well, thank you. So just so you know, I love Harmony Homes, and you guys really put out a great product. So I'm not going to delay it or obey it. I'm going to, before I make my motions on this, is there anyone wishing to be heard on these items? Okay.
So Madam Mayor, pro tem... Excuse me, there was one revised condition. Oh, there we go.
So that's, yeah, so before we do get to a motion, Mr. Anderson from Public Works does need to read in an amended condition change for number 14 on the tentative map, which is item number 77 this morning.
Okay.
Mayor, pro tem, Bart Anderson, Las Vegas Public Works. I'd like to amend, as Robert says, condition number 14 to read as follows. If not built by others prior to permits, construct an oversized public sewer along the full frontage of this site in Tropical Parkway to the intersection of Pooley Road where other location acceptable to the city engineer. Contact the Sanitary Sewer Planning Section of the Department of Public Works to enter into an oversizing agreement prior to construction to be reimbursed for the cost difference of constructing an oversized sewer versus an 8-inch sewer. The developer shall provide to the city all information and materials necessary to submit an application to amend Bureau of Land Management right-of-way grants N-55999, N-90154, and any others that may be applicable to ensure appropriate rights for construction and maintenance of public sewer are in place. That's the condition that I'd like to amend, and the reason for that is that when this site was sold by the BLM, the adjoining site was not sold. And while we had conditions to the BLM sale of that site to provide these easements, since it wasn't sold, they weren't provided, and we're now asking that they be provided and that this applicant, who needs them, help us get them.
Thank you. So do you agree to everything?
Correct. We concur with all staff's recommendations.
Perfect. And the newest one, where we're going to be working together to make sure we don't create an alley?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, so again, I'm just going to say, are there, is there anyone else in the audience wishing to be heard on these items, 72 through 77? Okay, thank you. On item number 72, my motion is to approve with all conditions, and I'll be voting aye. Please vote and please post. That motion carries. On item number 73, my motion is to approve with all conditions. My motion is aye. Councilman Creer? He's an aye on 72 as well and 73. Motion posted. Motion passes. On my item 74, my motion is to approve with all conditions. Please vote, aye, and post. Thank you. That motion passes. On item, agenda item number 75, my motion is to approve with all conditions. Thank you. Vote and post. That motion passes. On item number 76, my motion is to approve with all conditions. Please vote, aye, and post. Thank you. That motion passes. And finally, on item number 77, my motion is to approve with all conditions. I vote aye.
As amended.
As amended. Yes, that's what I meant when I said all conditions. And amended. And please post. And that motion carries. Thank you so much, and let's get back together in my office and make sure that we just don't create an alley.
Thank you, Mayor, pro tem, and members of the council.
Thank you so much. Okay. Now, we are going to agenda item number 80. Oh, yes. Hang on, this guy's going under my desk again. Okay, we are back. We are on agenda item number 78. Zone 77502, public hearing, applicant owner Stephen A. Phillips and Raynell Phillips for possible action on a request for zoning from U undeveloped to MXU, mixed-use, general plan designation to C1, limited commercial on 5.52 acres at 6651 West Charleston Boulevard. Ward 1, Councilman Knutson. The Planning Commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing. I now declare it open. Is the applicant present?
Good morning, counsel. Steve Phillips, 489 Yvonne Leadner Street.
Thank you. Go ahead. Mr. Summerfield?
Madam Mayor, the, Madam Mayor, pro tem, the proposed zoning of the subject site is compatible with those surrounding land uses and zoning... compatible with those surrounding land uses and zoning districts, and its staff has recommended approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Councilman Knutson?
Mayor Pro Tem, I've driven this site multiple times, and I've purchased my Christmas tree from this lot for the last 10 years. I'm very sad to see the Christmas tree business not be there anymore. But the proposed zoning change is appropriate for that area, and I am in support and would motion for approval.
Thank you so much. There's a motion on the floor. I vote aye. Let's vote and post. And that motion carries. Great. Good luck.
Thank you, and I paid for four hours of parking. Any chance I can get a refund?
Merry Christmas. Thanks for the donation.
You can get a sticker if you parked in the structure. You'll get a sticker at security.
You can get a sticker at security?
If you parked in the structure.
If you parked in the structure. You're welcome. Agenda Item Number 80. DIR-77619. Applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request to approve the 2020 Planning Commission meeting schedule. The Planning Commission recommends denial. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing. I now declare it open. Mr. Summerfield?
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, before you this afternoon, this morning, is the 2020 schedule for the Planning Commission. When this went to the Planning Commission, we proposed a schedule that was consistent with council direction from last year, this time last year, which was to continue a two-meeting-a-month Planning Commission cycle. The Planning Commission chose not to approve that schedule and asked for direction from City Council. Based on conversations at briefings yesterday, I the clerk's office is passing out right now two options that we have for an agenda. The first option is to maintain the two-meeting-a-month Planning Commission schedule, which is the version that was in the backup material as well. The second option is if the council, based on our current trending numbers and the average length of the Planning Commissions, is supportive of going to one meeting a month, then we have that scheduled as well. One meeting a month would start in February, and we would have those Planning Commission meetings occur on the second Tuesday of every month beginning in February. We do have two meetings currently scheduled for January, as January actually falls on the preceding year's calendar. With that, I'll take any questions, and again, staff supports whatever direction the council chooses to take on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Summerfield. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on this item?
Yes, excuse me. I just would like to address the council.
I need you to state your name, sir, and your address.
My name is Admin Gloucester.
Are you making a comment on this particular item?
I was coming to address the council to be clear on what item, the initiative for the homeless.
No, this is not that item, sir. This is about our Planning Commission. So if we get to that, she's going to talk to our clerk. This is not the item.
Okay.
Thank you so much, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
And thanks for coming down here with those crutches and being part of City Council and all of that. So if you talk to Ms. Stacy, she'll help you.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you, sir. Okay, so this is a public hearing, and I declare it open. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on this? So you know what I would like to do for the record, Mr. Summerfield and our fabulous city manager, Scott Adams. On this particular agenda, and I would like to get feedback from my council members before I make a motion for this for Agenda Item Number 80. So we worked really hard on making sure we had two meetings a month to make sure because it's all about the customer in the city of Las Vegas. It's all about the customer. And what we were finding previously is we had meetings that lasted here until 4:40 a.m. We had a Planning Commissioner fall asleep on the way home driving. It was not acceptable. But at the rate and at the same time, so at the rate that we are now, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Summerfield, right now the Planning Commission meetings are going for about an hour, an hour and a half, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Our average meeting is about 90 minutes, so it's about an hour and a half. We've had one meeting since the since short-term rentals were no longer a part of our agendas. We've had one meeting that went for a total of five hours, but most of our meetings are averaging at about 90 minutes.
Okay. And so depending upon which way the council votes, because I I don't know how everyone's going to vote on this, I just want to make sure, and Mr. Adams, if you want to say a few words on this, it is the most important that our customers never wait, you know, past 10 o'clock. And depending upon if we vote one meeting or two meetings, if we were to vote one meeting, I want to make sure that there is that option if we have to put a second meeting in, that that could be placed administratively, and it can happen without I mean, how does that work?
So Madam Mayor Pro Tem, so if we go with the one-meeting-a-month schedule, yes. So we have usually pretty good lead time to know what an agenda volume is going to look like because of our pre-application process and those middles. So if we find that we we look like we're going to have an excessively long agenda, I have the ability to contact the Chair of the Planning Commission and request that they add a special meeting in which then we can divide up that agenda between those two meetings prior to them ever posting or publishing an agenda so that we could address that. It is, as I mentioned in briefings yesterday, is generally easier to add meetings to a schedule than it is to try to take meetings away if we find current trends continue the way they are, and that's a concern or consideration for the council.
Thank you, Mr. Summerfield. Mr. Adams, can I just have a couple of thoughts from you on this?
Sure. Scott Adams, city manager, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. As I mentioned in briefing yesterday, previously, I I had a real concern about the way the Planning Commission was heading because anytime you go past midnight, you're really putting our customers in a situation that I I don't believe is appropriate for our customers, somebody who's appearing before the Planning Commission, have to wait from 6:00 p.m. when the meeting starts all the way through midnight and past. Given the fact that we we looks like we're averaging an hour and a half, I think we're going to be mitigating that issue. The only thing I mentioned in briefing is that when you look at the entitlement process, when you look at the entire development process from beginning to end, when an applicant goes forward with a major project, entitlements are the the long pole in the tent. They're the things that drive the length of the process. So the time that they appear before Planning Commission and Council is really determining the length of that time schedule. So taking away a meeting means you cause somebody to wait longer to get to Planning Commission. That's my only concern right now. Balancing that, though, with the commitment that our volunteers make, our volunteer Planning Commissioners, to serve as Planning Commissioners, I think it's a reasonable balance to go back to one meeting a month with the understanding that we could add a meeting when necessary should volume warrant. My only concern has been is we've always had to come to the council to force that to happen. They've never been willing to do it. So that'd be my only comment here is there ought to be some mechanism that says if the volume really starts to crank up and we really start pushing that midnight hour again, that we somehow can quickly go to that second meeting without having to go through a lot of rigmarole, rigmarole like we have in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. And Mr. Summerfield, we have that mechanism in place right now, don't we?
So Madam Mayor Pro Tem, so we have it for the one-off. So I can work, the Chair can call a special meeting, and it would be a special meeting. So if I advise, because we're seeing the numbers tick up for a particular meeting, that we need to have a second meeting that month, we would have that ability to call a special meeting working with the Chair. The schedule, though, the schedule does an amendment to the schedule does require action of at least the Planning Commission to approve a revised schedule per their bylaws. And if they don't approve one, then it comes forward to City Council, as we've done the last two years. So to the city manager's point, I think it would have to be with an understanding that the Planning Commission knows that you all, and I think maybe you can even make that as part of your motion, that it is expected that should volumes creep up and that they show that they're going to trend and stay that way, that Planning Commission would amend their schedule to include a two-meeting-a-month schedule at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Summerfield. So again, before I make my motion, I'd like to open it up to council. Council members, does anyone have anything to say?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll start down here. Councilman Krier?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. From a person that was under Planning Commission for two years and sat through meetings that lasted for us at the 2:00, maybe 3:00 in the morning, I am very, very, very intimately sensitive to how long these meetings last. And I do believe that, and I've said this in the past, I don't believe that we're at our best. I don't believe the city's at their best when you go past midnight, 1:00, 11:00 at night. And so I was very happy when we moved to the two meetings. I thought it would be much more better for for everybody involved. But since the meetings have been averaging an hour and a half, and I know that it's a lot, and it's a commitment for the Planning Commissioners that we ask to serve as well on there, right? We have some very professional people who are taking time out of their schedules twice a month to come out. If there is an opportunity to limit that to once a month, I think that would be better as well. And so I would be in favor of moving it back to once a month, and if it becomes a problem in the new sense, I think this council will address it and deal with it. And if we have to go back to two nights a month, then it is what it is. But at this point, I would definitely go back to one day, one day out of the month. Thank you.
Councilman Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I see no reason why we should go back to one meeting a month. It's been two meetings a month for a while, and I just look at it from the developer's perspective. I think the developers want to know when these Planning Commission meetings are scheduled in advance, which they would be under this option where the dates are already set for the year. If you go to one meeting a month, I think you mentioned in our briefing yesterday, it's going to double the time for these these developments to be approved, right? I think it was like 45 days to 100, 100 days or something like that you said, Robert.
Through you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. So yes, Councilman. So right now, it's about a 45-day period from submittal of application to get to the Planning Commission hearing. What this what it would slow down is right now, those Planning Commission meetings happen approximately every two weeks occasionally. If we have a fifth, fifth Tuesday in there, then it's it's a three-week. But that gives them more opportunity to be in the month of March. They know they have two meetings that they can shoot for. The the area where it really would interfere in terms of those timeframes is, as I mentioned yesterday, if you have an applicant who has to do some minor tweak to their application in order to get it through, and they need to obey, now they would be obeying instead of a potential, although we don't encourage it, a potential abeyance of two weeks, now they're obeying a full month, and that adds another 30 days instead of 14 days potentially to their application window, which then trickles because now they're on another if it requires City Council action, then they're on another City Council agenda a month from there. So so yes, it has the potential for there to be delays in the process with one meeting a month.
Right. And I-
Over what we have now.
I think that's the whole point. I mean, what we're trying to do at the city is we're trying to be business-friendly, development-friendly. The economy's hot. People are doing stuff. We don't we don't need to prolong these developments. We meet twice a month. The Planning Commission should meet twice a month. It doesn't impact the budget going to twice a month. The schedule will be set now for the entire year. That's your that's your recommendation, staff, right? And I'm going to support your recommendation.
Thank you. Councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. I've been reaching out to some folks that frequently come through my office with development projects, and they feel that the workload that was on the shoulders of the Planning Commission has significantly been reduced, and they've they're comfortable with us going back to a monthly cycle. I see that our Planning Commissioners themselves want to go back to a monthly cycle, and I think that when you keep everybody happy, that's the best element because they're going to do the best job that they can. And I like that. If Mr. Summerfield sees that the workload is increasing, knocking on wood, 2020, we're going to see lots of development happening in the city of Las Vegas, and we're going to have to add a second meeting, then that's something that can be done. And I feel comfortable voting for a monthly meeting, knowing that a second can be requested upon the volume increasing. So I think that's reasonable. I think it's fair. And most importantly, I think the Planning Commissioners, you know, I think it would make their life easier to know that they're focusing on one meeting versus being parted into. But I know they will be flexible and work with us if a second is required.
Thank you, Councilwoman Diaz. And Councilman Knutson?
Thank you very much, very much, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. So I echo the concerns by Councilman Anthony. However, along with Councilwoman Diaz, and what I I think you mentioned is the one meeting a month I'm comfortable with, as long as there's release valves. So if our planning director, Mr. Summerfield, can acknowledge that if there is an abundance of items, that calling a special meeting is appropriate, I would also like the opportunity if as a council, if for a council member, if I'm getting requests that it's delaying the development process, then I would like to be able to talk about that. Maybe we can do that in council meetings to say there's a there's a holdup and potentially call for a special Planning Commission meeting. So with that, I'm comfortable with one meeting a month, as long as there's release valves to change if we need to.
Thank you, Councilman Knutson. And Councilwoman Seaman?
Yeah, I have the same concerns as the city manager and Councilman Anthony regarding entitlements and the long haul time before the next meeting. And again, as Mayor Pro Tem said, this is about customer service. So I'm going to support staying at the two meetings per month.
Thank you. And so thank you, council members, for weighing in. So with that, I'm going to make my motion. Know that the Chair of Planning Commission is my chair, is my Planning Commissioner, Lou DeSalvio, who has been texting me crazily while we're up here, telling me that he will obey. If we need two meetings, he will make that happen. So and I and I know, and as my peers up here, so I'm going to make the motion with the exception. So to go back to the monthly meeting, however, Mr. Summerfield, as you see things coming up, you get with our Planning Chair, Mr. DeSalvio, and get that second meeting on so our customers don't wait. Because if we see a problem with that, then I'm I'm very I'm back in favor of going back to two meetings a month. But for right now, my motion will be to go. You want to restate how we're going to say that?
So Madam Mayor Pro Tem, if I could, then what I would ask is that before you, you have a one-meeting-a-month option. So if your motion could be to adopt the one-meeting-a-month option of the 2020 Planning Commission meeting schedule, that would be, I believe, appropriate. I'll look at our city attorney's office. And then I will confirm for you that we will do that. And then for Councilman Knutson's request, we will make available on a monthly basis a kind of a recap so that you can see what the the trend is looking like so that if you want to have a further discussion in the new year or as a couple months of one meeting a month get under our belt, you have any concerns, we can revisit the conversation at least and go from there.
Perfect. Thank you. So that is my motion. Please vote. And post. And that motion carries. Thank you so much. And now we will go to Reports and Presentations, Agenda Item Number 81. And we have a report from our fabulous city manager, Scott D. Adams.
Good morning, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, members of the City Council, Scott Adams, city manager. I have just one quick report to make, something I mentioned to you in briefing yesterday, and that is this past week, the U.S. Supreme Court declined to take up for consideration the appeal of the Ninth Circuit Court's decision in the Boise case, that being the Boise case relative to homeless encampments. And I want to remind our city council and the public that our encampment ordinance that you passed contemplated the Boise decision, in fact, accommodates the concerns that were expressed by the Ninth Circuit Court in that decision. One notable consideration was the fact that- One notable consideration was the fact that as we implement or move forward with the encampment ordinance, that we can suspend enforcement should there not be sufficient shelter capacity at the time we're, we're implementing the, or administering the ordinance. So I just wanted to make that point. I didn't want anyone to think that the fact that they didn't take it up meant that it had some tremendously negative impact on what we're doing with our encampment ordinance. It's business as usual, because we put that in place with the Boise Ninth Circuit Court decision in place. So it'll be business as usual going forward, under the timeline that we had previously indicated, in terms of the administration and enforcement of the encampment ordinance. Now, that is the end of my report.
Thank you so much, Mr. Adams. This is a report only, and no motion is required. We're going to move on to Item Number 82, which is a report by Jonathan Ullman, Chairman of Downtown Vegas Alliance, DVA, regarding the organization's activities and achievements throughout 2019 and their goals for 2020 awards. Mr. Arnt, Mr. Ullman? Or, we don't have Mr. Ullman. Would you state your name for the record, both of you?
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Protam and members of City Council. For the record, Bill Arnt, Economic and Urban Development. With me today is Carolyn Wheeler, who is the Executive Director of the Downtown Vegas Alliance. Ms. Wheeler has a great presentation to talk to you about what's happened over this past calendar year, and what we can look forward to on the year ahead. So with that, I'll turn it over to Carolyn.
Great, thank you so much, Bill. And thank you for giving me this opportunity to share with you some really exciting things that we've done for the Alliance and with the city last year, and some of the great things that we're going to be doing this year. As you know, the Downtown Vegas Alliance is an organization of 70-plus members, consisting of large and small business owners, as well as nonprofit partners. All of our members have a shared commitment to our mission, which is to create a vibrant and diverse and sustainable downtown. We've done this by putting together a series of successful meetings and convenings for our members and for the public, to help them understand issues that relate to the downtown, and to engage with partners like the city and other community agencies. In addition to our Successes and Insight event, where we bring in 250 people to learn about different topics that are relating to downtown, we also have a series of mixers and meetings with the city, where our members are able to provide input and ask questions. We're really excited for 2020, and are glad to be partnering with the city again this year. We've really set some great goals for the Downtown Vegas Alliance. We are looking forward to increasing the attendance at the events that we're going to be doing, and generating more media coverage for them. We're also going to continue to present relative timely topics that relate to our businesses and our residents, and really capitalize on utilizing subject matter experts that we have in the city, in our membership, and in surrounding communities. We're also going to have a little bit of fun, and incorporate some more social media interaction, really generate some buzz, and engage people, and people in our audience and our members around our events. We're also going to be continuing to work with the city and provide feedback on some of the initiatives and the meetings that we're doing. And we're also really going to understand how the Downtown Vegas Alliance cannot only address issues, but be part of the solution that is affecting our community. And one of the things that is very important to us is, as we do these events, as we do these meetings, as we do these initiatives, that we're going to be creating clear and actionable next steps for our members. So just to give you a preview of some of the events that we have planned for 2020, we are going to continue with our Successes and Insights in February. Based on the mayor's schedule, we would love to have another meeting with our Steering Committee and the mayor. We'll also be doing a Successes and Insights in partnership with Living in the City in the spring. We'll continue to do another Successes and Insights in October. And then again, more meetings with our city council members and our members. And then I hope to be here again next year in December, and presenting all the amazing things we've done for 2020. So as we plan out our dates, we'll make sure that all of you are invited to the meetings, and really get a chance to meet our members and hear more about what the Downtown Vegas Alliance is doing. So thank you guys so much for your time and your support. We really appreciate your partnership.
Thank you so much. This is a report only, and no motion is required. Mr. Arnt, do you have anything to add?
No, just on behalf of the city of Las Vegas, I'd like to thank Ms. Wheeler and the entire Downtown Vegas Alliance. I believe that private business best represents private business, and that's really the spirit of our partnership, to have our, our private businesses and industry that are doing such wonderful things in downtown be represented by a stakeholder group to help move downtown forward. So thank you for hearing our report.
Thank you, and I agree. Yes, well, thanks for that report, and I agree with you wholeheartedly. We will now move on to Item Number 83, which we are going to have a presentation by city staff on development trends, and on the process improvements in the city's development functions, including the ongoing Electronic Development Department integration, Project EDDI, a multi-year program to update the functions and system for all departments at the Development Services Center, DCS, and all wards. Mr. Adams? Oh, Mr. Perrigo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. And I'm really happy to say good morning, Tom Perrigo, Executive Director of Community Development. We're going to give you a kind of a very brief overview of some of the development trends that we're seeing through the Development Services Center. And then Rick Vermani is going to give you an update on Project EDDI, and the things that we're doing in order to better serve our customers. So just to kind of give you a sense from the different departments, Public Works, these are transportation corridor assets that were developed as part of development projects over the last five years. 72 miles of public sewer, that's a significant number. That also means that 72 miles of roadways were developed within private development in order to accommodate the new growth in our community. And you can see some of the other numbers here in terms of storm drain, traffic signals, school flasher systems, pedestrian flasher systems, and 750 streetlights, all of this to accommodate and go in with new development. You can see here the public sector roadway projects, about 30 miles developed over the last five years. So remember, though, that's just the public, we just talked about the private side, so it's well over 70 miles of roadways that have been developed. Barricade plans process is a huge indicator of development activity, and you can see that it's been steadily increasing over the last five years. So when we look at the Planning Department and entitlements that have come through as an indicator of growth, you can see 2,400 projects in the last five years. That's all the activity that the Planning Department processes for Planning Commission and for ultimately city council decisions. 7,800 acres absorbed in that time. That's a significant amount of development. 9,600 single-family, 7,500 multifamily. So you can see a significant amount of multifamily development. We know we have a shortage of multifamily apartments, condos, and so on, and we're seeing a tremendous amount of activity in developing multifamily units. And almost 10 million square feet of commercial industrial space entitled during that timeframe. License applications have remained steady, but significant number, around 10,000 business applications annually that are processed. And then building and safety, this is where it goes from, we make public investment, and then we have entitlements, and then we have development. So you can see 22,000 building permits issued this year. It's interesting that we're seeing that same trend in multifamily through those permits and single-family, and significant amount of commercial as well. Here's the valuation, $1.5 billion in 2019. It's a pretty big number. What's driving that big increase from around 700, 800 million annually, we've seen over the last four, five years, that's all the downtown activity. So we've seen a significant increase in building permit activity. That will then translate into assessed value and everything that goes with that, and all that activity in our downtown. So we will see that, we see that activity in wards three and five, and all that downtown development. Number of inspections, just to give you an idea, 100,000 this year, and about 90,000 to 100,000 over the last five years, every single year. That's your building and safety inspectors out in the field taking care of our customers. I always like to kind of wrap up looking at assessed value. And in my opinion, assessed value is one of the truest measures of our success as a city. I think that what we do as a city to make sure that we have quality development projects, that we have safe neighborhoods, that we have excellent parks, recreation, all the services we provide, public safety, that all wraps up into creating demand for our city. People want to live here. They want to raise their families here. They want to do business here. They want to open their business here. They want to be part of this great city of Las Vegas. And that's reflected in demand for property, and that then is translated into assessed value, which ultimately brings property taxes and revenue that we need to continue to provide the great services. So what we see here is across all the wards, I had them break it down by ward, we've seen a fairly healthy growth in assessed value over the last five years. And you can see the numbers bouncing around between 4% and 8%, and sometimes 2018 hovering around 10% change in assessed value in our city. And I think, again, that's a reflection of all the work we do at the city, and all the things that we're doing to create a great quality of life for people. And then you can kind of see that, that trend over time for the entire city. So again, hovering around 5%, 6%, 2018, 11% was a big number. 2020 is going to be another big year, when all of the projects that, that permit valuation that I showed, how there was a big uptick in 2019, that will translate into assessed value in 2020. So that's just sort of a real high-level overview of some of the development activity. It's, it's really interesting, when you step back and take a look at it, there's a lot of work being done at the Development Services Center in our city, and all of the people that are working hard every day to make sure that we're serving your customers and building great projects in your wards. And really exciting and really proud to be a part of that. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Rick, who's going to give you an update on some of the things we're doing to improve our processes and the way we serve our customers, focusing on Project EDDI. Rick is a, is a great guy to be leading this effort. He's not just an IT guy, but he's a process engineer mind, and he's really good at helping figure out how to really streamline our processes, at the same time, provide the technological tools to help facilitate those processes, and again, better serve our customers. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rick.
Thank you, Tom, Madam Mayor Protam, City Council. I'm here, my name is Rick Vermani. I am the Systems Manager for the Development Services Center. And I'm here to actually show you today some of the fantastic results we are seeing from the largest citywide reengineering of processes and a business transformation that we have undertaken. This program started in 2015, and is called Project EDDI. Going the wrong way, sorry. Here we go. So this program has been built on three pillars that have remained consistent in the city council's goals and objectives. The first is to build an iconic city. We are supporting this by facilitating development, making it easier for developers to come and build faster and increase value within our city. The second pillar that this is built on is to build a smart Las Vegas. We are facilitating online capabilities to make it easier for them to build and get their permits and licenses and all done online. So this is how we are accelerating that as well. And finally, to develop a customer-centric business focus. Madam Mayor Protam, I just heard you say a little while back that we are a customer-centric city. During my presentation, you will hear firsthand from some of our customers to show you how we are achieving that goal. The business drivers for this program were derived directly from the city council's goals and objectives. We set out in 2015 to become the best city for developers to invest in, and we did this by creating the best developer experience. We also set out to build processes for licensing, permitting, and planning that were better than any other city could simply buy. Because of this, we are, we have created now successfully a sustainable competitive advantage against other cities. We began the process by streamlining our development functions, which meant breaking down departmental silos, and making development as efficient as possible, which includes going online, but also making it easier to transition from one department of planning and then on to building easier. We decided to truly partner with our developers and not just be regulators. And what that means is working with them to see their development projects through for them. This is a short video that shows you one of the changes that we have made, and it illustrates what we are doing. Let us start by looking at one example of how digital transformation has changed the way we work and serve our customers. Approving permits and planning applications requires city technicians to review a lot of paper. This process is not only burdensome on city staff, but requires builders, developers, and even homeowners to submit large volumes of paper plans that are expensive to print and hard to handle.
This is the large, large plan with all of the, all of the common disciplines. This is the old set of drawings that needed to be corrected, and now this should be the final review.
Once the permit is approved, building plans need to be kept on record for the life of the structure. This has created a large and expensive storage of paper dating back to some of the oldest construction projects in the city. But thanks to Project EDDI, all of this has now changed. With recently completed technology improvements, we are processing all plans, even the largest ones electronically. Customers can now submit any permit and planning application online, and upload all plans and documents 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Not only does this save customers the cost of printing and delivering large volumes of paper, it allows various city staff to review the plans simultaneously on their computers, saving valuable time to approval of customer applications.
We'll be more efficient to, to not have everything so cluttered, and everything's organized on the computer, and on our list of things to do in the order in which we need to do it.
Reviewing plans electronically is just one of many improvements that we have made. As technology is automating more of the routine tasks, the city staff is now empowered to spend more time in helping developers make it through the development process. Let me give you one example. You saw Brian in that video carrying these plans back and forth from the plans library. They don't have to do that anymore, so they can spend more time on facilitating how to meet city code, and helping developers get their permits issued faster. So the whole idea of all of this automation is that we facilitate and help customers more. We also, our field staff is spending more time now in the field, working with the customers as opposed to doing work in the office, which is a big plus. And you saw from Tom's numbers that we are doing over 100,000 of those inspections every year. The main thing that has changed is that through all of these changes, the staff now feels empowered, and a new can-do culture has emerged at the DSC. Next, let us take a trip with our inspection staff to see some of the process improvements being made in the field.
Our inspectors have been equipped with updated equipment in the field, allowing them to share real-time data with contractors and homeowners. You'll be able to instantly see the results of your inspection. This saves valuable time, giving you immediate notification on how to remedy problems our inspectors may find.
There is no more paperwork, all that has gone away, and efficiency is greatly improved, especially for the customer, because we can give them results in real time, instead of waiting till the end of the day for them to find out what the results of their inspections are immediately when I input it and transmit it. They can see the, the results of the inspection, see the corrections that need to be made, and they can do that and then reschedule their inspection. and they can do that and then reschedule their inspection, most likely for the next day. So it really helps them and saves almost a whole day of their time. They enjoy it a lot more. It's more friendly to them because they can schedule most of their inspections online without having to go down to the Development Services Center. And they can also get their inspection results via text messaging or email in real time.
So as you can see, what are these benefits for the customer? From a customer and a development industry perspective, we now have the ability to do everything online, not just the inspection results, but also any reviews that we are doing. As we are doing them, the customer can see what the issues are, so they can start making corrections to those. We are also offering our developers a personalized customer dashboard. Many contractors have dozens of open permits at one time. They can see all of them at the same time on their dashboard. This is a huge help to our developers. And you'll hear in my next short video from the customers on why they like that. We are also reducing the turnaround time for reviews because instead of routing paper from one reviewer to the next, multiple reviewers can now review all the permit plans at the same time. So we are streamlining the flow between the development function. So basically, what we are doing is we are connecting the dots from planning to building, also through in our licensing. And we are being more proactive. We are sending out emails to customers when there are potential issues, which we weren't doing in the past. And now we are also telling them when there's an action required by them in an automated fashion. So much faster response time on all of this stuff. The goal of all of this is to make compliance easier. And the outcome from that is that we are promoting public safety and welfare. So this is a short video of some direct feedback from some of our customers. To see how our customers are receiving the changes we have made, we went to speak with them firsthand. Take a look at what they had to say. Monique O'Neil is the starts manager at D.R. Horton Builders, and she is very familiar with the permitting process all across the Las Vegas Valley.
And so I do appreciate that with a click of a button, that we have a dashboard and it takes us directly to our plan check to see where everything is at. We have a online system called File Cloud, so it's just like Dropbox or anything where our repository is at. And that's where all of our building plans are at for our consultants, correction letters, initial submittals. And so all we'll do, which I like, is just upload directly from there. So that's the one great thing, like I said, and that we're not constrained to having to leave. And I love how you guys even do the permits. The permits, regular email, submit it, you get something that comes back and says, yep, we received it. Here's your number, so you can check through the process. It's simple, and that's how it should be.
Michelle Merrick is Plans Manager at KB Homes. When asked how our building department is doing, this is what she had to say.
I believe that the building department is working with the industry to make things easier for us. I think online submitted is one way, being open to suggestions, talking to the industry about what they could do better. In the recent past, by not, by going online, we don't have to spend as much time and resources driving down to the city, which takes a lot of time out of your day. It's quicker, it's cost-effective, because I don't have to print multiple sets of plans now. So it is an advantage to be able to just do it online.
Do you feel that the city is working to help you get things done faster now?
Yes, much faster. Because I know, and they pride themselves on being more efficient, being on top, and I know with Kevin going in there, because him and I worked through project box together at the county.
Oh, okay.
So we have that in common, and we know what we went through.
That's good.
And then, so this, like I said, is much simpler.
Okay.
So that's what is great, because I have a lot of people still coming into the industry who are technology savvy. So the easier, the better.
So as you can see, we are attaining that customer service goal. And our online trends, historical trends over the last five years are showing that there is a greater and greater adoption of these improved processes. As you can see here, the application fees that are being paid more online now than in-person and in-line. We are also seeing an increase in the inspections that are being scheduled online, either through our website or through IVR. And the building department applications online are also rising. There's a very important statistic to note here. 27% of our applications received are received now when the city offices are closed. Because we can do this online, we are getting more than a quarter of our applications, because we can do this 24/7/365. In licensing, we are seeing similar trends. Now, more than 80% of our license applications come in online. These changes and the drop in the need for customers to come to the DSC has led to a decline in the traffic at the DSC lobby, which I know all of you love, because, you know, we have all these festivities there. But we are now looking to repurpose a lot of that waiting area because it's not being used, which is a really good sign. So the coming improvements, this is, I think, the crowning jewel of our Project Eddy. You see, I'm going to give you an example of how we have created sustainable improvements. We, when a civil permit goes through a final signature process, it has to be signed by these five companies. And this has to be done manually with paper plans being carried from one utility to the next. After they have been signed manually, then the developer can come to us and we can approve them simultaneously through our city departments. This process currently takes six weeks to complete. In those six weeks, they cannot start work. So in order to overcome this massive delay, we are looking to subsume all these utilities into our electronic signature process, which will allow us to complete this process in one week. That is an average saving of four weeks on over 200 projects a year. When I was speaking earlier about creating sustainable competitive advantage, this is the kind of process disruption that I was speaking about. And I can tell you, no other jurisdiction has the technology and the capability to do this. That is why we will continue to forge ahead of the rest of the cities. The road ahead leads to even more such process disruptions. We have built this capability for our developers to have this login and a dashboard. We can easily extend this to all the city residents, and that has to be yet funded and approved. We are looking for integration with the Las Vegas Valley agencies to find even more opportunities to shorten the process. And we are also looking to work with private industry to see how we can embed our government functions into their products and services. So there's a lot more to come here. And we are going to maintain Las Vegas as a leader in this effort to keep us ahead of the rest. In closing, I just want to mention that this effort over the last five years has actually included more than 200 people, city staff, that have worked directly with me on this program. This is not all my doing. And this is not just IT. This is also the business side that PP people have really devoted their time and effort to re-engineering these processes with us.
So it's really great to be able to stand here now, because Rick gives us a presentation annually since we started. And a lot of it's about stuff that we're going to do. Now we're able to show you what we've done and what we're going to do. This next step is a top priority on my goals for this year, as it is Rick and I working on this. He's obviously doing most of the work, but getting those utilities involved is a big deal. And if we do that, that is a game changer for us. But I want to, I want to say that, you know, this process really is grounded in the direction and policy and leadership of the council. And it's fueled by the determination of Scott Adams and Jorge Servantes to build community to make life better, which they drive into us every day. And the employees live that. They live our values of kind, committed, and smart. And your leadership team at the DSC is the best I've ever seen. They work collaboratively on projects. We go over things every week, all the big projects. And they are coming up with new ways to innovate and improve our service delivery and improve the quality and safety of our development. And it's just, it's just really, I mean, I see you all the time on all the big projects we talk about, but the stuff going on behind the scenes is really exciting and something that I'm most proud of and really excited to be a part of. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions, but really, thank you for the opportunity to give you a brief update of the DSC and brag a little bit about what we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Perrigo. Thank you, Mr. Rick. I have to just say, I'm very excited about what I saw. Great job, Mr. Rick. I loved everything. I'm going to open it up to our council members. Councilwoman Knutson?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem. Thank you for the presentation. This is the area of the city that I'm the weakest in, so I've been, this has been a steep learning curve for me over the last several months, and I appreciate the patience the staff at the DSC and everyone really has been giving me. The area that I still have questions about is how the city's preparing around infill development, because that seems substantially different than like the development in Ward Six, which is a very nice area, but not as pleasing as Ward One.
The best. It's the best. Mine's the most aesthetically pleasing, hon.
Ward One is competitive aesthetically wise. But I, that's one area that I see as an opportunity, at least looking at it from my perspective, is the infill development is different than development in the open West. And so from the developers that I've been talking to, the land use and zoning is incredibly important. In Ward One, there's some more restrictive land use zoning rules. And so that, I'm just curious about how, how we can be proactive. I've talked about it before from the empty big box doors. How do we, how do we repurpose, rethink what those empty big boxes will look like? And that starts from the land use and zoning, but obviously impacts what we're talking about here. So I'm just curious about your thoughts around how infill development gets incorporated into this thinking.
Absolutely. Excellent question, Councilman. So there's sort of two, two levels to respond. One is the bigger policy issues, the things that are being addressed through, you know, the Downtown 2045 Vision Plan, through the 2050 Master Plan, all that work, the new zoning through the Form Based Code. That's kind of the higher-end policy questions that we'll be addressing. The focus of this presentation is more on just the day-to-day nuts and bolts of how to get a project approved and through the system. And so in that regard, again, you're exactly right. The infill development creates the greatest challenges, but since we're seeing more and more of that kind of development, and we sort of showed that in the trends, we work really hard to overcome some of the issues. There's, there's all kinds of big challenges that cost time and money for these developments. So one thing that we're doing is taking the entire leadership team once a month, meeting with a new business at their business, and they bring in their architect, their engineer, their builder, whoever, and we have a conversation. We, you know, we give them some business, you know, maybe we'll buy a beer or whatever. But we listen to them, and they, they give us feedback on every issue they had getting that business open, and we're learning a lot. And we, we're really grateful that the business owners and the folks involved are being very transparent and open with us and telling us exactly what they think and what the issues were and how we can resolve them. And from that, we're already incorporating changes into our, into our business. Every, well, we've talked about some of it in the past, but we're making a lot of changes that, some of these things will come as policy questions to the council, but a lot of it's changes in our processes and things that we just do administratively to help improve that. You know, again, there are some issues with licensing, and we've got a whole big effort now. It really, that process sparked a major effort to look at some of our license code and some of our zoning that goes with that. And we'll be bringing those projects forward to you. I think we briefed it a week or so ago. But yes, we are absolutely focused on that, and we are taking action consistently and continuously to address some of those issues.
Thank you, Councilwoman Knutson. Councilwoman Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This is pretty impressive stuff. I mean, it really, it really is. To have 80% of plans checked online is just unbelievable. But I think the game changer is going from six weeks down to one week. I mean, that, that's, I don't think anybody would have thought that was, would happen. So I guess what I'd like to hear is that you are approaching these companies that were on your PowerPoint, and they are working with you. Is that correct?
Yes, we have had a lot of success with the ones we've talked to so far, which includes Southwest Gas, it includes the Water District. And not only are they listening to work with us, they are looking to do what we're doing. And so, so far, we have not found any resistance, but if we do, I do hope to come to council to get your support, to go to their management to push forward with this, because ultimately, the pushback that we are getting is from large companies like Cox, because they're, for them, we are a very small area compared to all the customers that they service. So they're saying, why isn't everybody else doing it? It's because we have built this capability to do it. We have built this competitive advantage. Ultimately, we are looking to serve our developers, and we are hoping that once we do it, that other jurisdictions will also get on board with Cox. But they have, they have worked with us so far. And if we get pushback, we will reach out.
We shouldn't have any resistance, and if there is, then we all know who to call up here. So just let us know.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Seaman.
I too am very impressed with what you're doing. And I may have missed this, but this streamlining process with utilities taking six weeks to one week, when do we expect to see that happen?
I'm expecting by the middle of 2020, mostly because we have a lot of red tape to cut through at their end, because, you know, just giving them access to our software is not enough. We have to go through their IT departments and have to work with them to make sure that we're not violating any of their controls and rules.
Thank you so much for all your work.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem. And so I know that technology eliminates hurdles, but then, when it works, it's fabulous. But then, when there's a kink or the system goes down, then it's pandemonium-like, it's not doing it. So I wanted to know if we had a Plan B in place, so let's say, I don't know, something happens. And then I also wanted to know a little bit more about cybersecurity measures that we're taking to make sure that people's proprietary information is secure when they're sending us everything electronically. So if you could speak to those two, like, what's our Plan B, when technology is in its greatest, and then how are we keeping people's information protected?
Absolutely. As you know, that IT has been working very closely now to build our backup systems at which extreme, extremely high reliability of software. But not only that, we have fully redundant systems that are offsite. So if our main site goes down within an hour or two, we will have our backup systems to take over. And these are not onsite, so it's not based on this site being up. The other thing that you spoke about cybersecurity, we've worked through with our secure security officer here in IT. We have also put in certain scanning that occurs on these files as they upload those files to us. So immediately, if we find any objectionable content in those files, the files are quarantined immediately, and they don't go into our software. So there is a whole bunch of gates that we've built to secure this. A lot of this online review of plans is actually being done in an online system called Bluebeam. Bluebeam is the world standard, and we are like one of the smallest users of this massive cloud platform. So companies like that are way ahead of the game in terms of securing our capabilities. So we have taken every precaution possible to make sure that we will be safe.
Awesome. And then one really quick follow-up. I remember touring all the archives and the toe tags, and I'm so, I'm sure that staff aren't like completely upset that no more will be, continue to be shipped their way, because it's an impressive amount of documents and space that it takes. So what are we doing prospectively to save them? Are they in a cloud? How long do we keep them? That kind of information. Just because sometimes things are coming up from, I don't know, the 50s and 40s. Just because sometimes things are coming up from, I don't know, the 50s and 40s, even, you know, in our offices about we did this permitted, and then we can't go back and find the record, and then we have a dispute between what they say they did and what we are saying they're not doing. And so I just think it's important to keep everything just for us to refer back to for whoever's in this seat 20 years from now. They can kind of see where we were heading and why we did things the way we did today.
Yes, very good question, Councilwoman Diaz. We are using a system called Assetwise from Bentley Systems. It is a DoD certified document management system. That is the highest level of certification you can get on a document management system. And all these documents will live in Assetwise, and like I said, it is fully redundant, so we have a backup that's running right behind the main system in case something happens. All the documents that you saw in my videos is a massive backlog that still has to be addressed. What we have done so far is that we've stopped any additions going into that backlog. So we have curtailed the growth of that backlog, but because we have to keep some of these plans for the life of the building, mostly commercial buildings, we have to ultimately scan those documents into Assetwise. And that, we've got estimates for that. We still don't have a budget set aside, and it's probably gonna end up being a multi-year budget, but I'll leave that up to city management to see how and when we can fund that. Sure.
Okay. Thank you. This was a report only, and now we will move on to item number 84. Very impressive, Mr. Rick and Mr. Perrigo. We are going to set date on any appeals filed or required public hearings. I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the City Planning Commission, meetings, and dangerous buildings or nuisance abatements.
Will do.
Citizen participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda?
Mayor Protem, Daniel Brayston, City of Las Vegas. While a handout's going out, I just want to remind people that Penn and Teller offer passes to their show for people that donate blood between tomorrow and the end of the year. They've been doing that for many years. I attended the Marathon Homeless Discussion in this room. I realized how little I knew about the Courtyard, and I've been down there about four times, learned a lot. I met the supervisor in the parking lot, and she gave me permission, she gave me her phone number to call on a Monday to set up a time to get more information. I called that Monday twice, I called that Tuesday twice, and I haven't heard back from her. I sought assistance, and the individual told me that she's too busy, so I'm offering to pay for half an hour of her time if somebody here can set up a time when I can go see what is actually going on down there. So I'd appreciate some information on that. The handout that I put out is just some items that I know you can't decide to hear, but I believe, well, I really don't know how your system works. I would really like somebody to publish something that if you want this road fixed, contact this person or do this, and I'd really help out. But these are some items that I know you don't have authority on, but I believe will help the community. I'm also seeking to, I don't see a clock here. Do you want me to go over those, or is it just enough in print to understand what I?
I think, Mr. Reston, I think print is good.
Great. All right, thank you much.
Thank you so much. Have a wonderful holiday. Is Mr. Perez, eh? Okay.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Marcos Alejandro Perez, and I'm here on behalf of the homelessness crisis that we have in Las Vegas. May I begin my speech?
Absolutely. The clock is set for two minutes.
Thank you. Our community has a very visible homelessness crisis on our hands. Everywhere we go, we see them and their struggle. It affects the homeless people themselves and our reputation as a city. Our goals as a community are the same: less homeless people on the street because they're working and a strong tourist economy. What I'm afraid of is the issue will only get worse. But if there was a solution that was so effective that it boosted the local economy with new jobs and tourism capital, it cleaned our streets and our fresh water supply for our desert community, and was so efficient in decreasing homelessness that cities like San Jose, Little Rock, and San Diego extended the program because of its overwhelmingly positive results, we would need to pay attention to such a beneficial resource. San Diego implemented, excuse me, San Diego implemented a plan to kill multiple birds with one stone. Their city was plagued with trash, and the 2008 recession skyrocketed their homeless rate. Their solution was to organize an infrastructure plan. They began by paying a small team of 20 homeless people minimum wage to pick up trash in the city. If the results were positive, the program would be expanded. If the program proved unsuccessful, it would be dismantled. As of April, there has been a 5.5% decrease in homelessness in San Diego, and tourism capital has increased by about $900 million, and the year still isn't over. Needless to say, these programs were expanded and are expected to become more robust as time moves on. Our ultimate question is, what is the most fruitful remedy to our homelessness issue? Should our solution be to give these people a chance to work their way out of their circumstances while serving our community, boosting our economy, and purifying our ecosystem? Or should our solution be to give someone with no money or place to sleep a new debt they won't be able to pay off, locking them in a place of perpetual poverty, struggle, and sadness? Our metropolis has an opportunity to excel and thrive with a cleaner reputation if we could help these people find our next step.
Thank you so much, Mr. Perez. That was great. Anyone else wishing to speak on public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we'll close that, and we'll move on to agenda item number 86. Councilmember recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. So let's start with Councilman Creer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. The Nutcracker, the Smith Center, will host the Nutcracker performances until Christmas Eve. This is a family holiday outing, is a magical journey through a larger-than-life world filled with waltzing flowers, nimble fairies, and moonlit snow. Glittering holiday cheer bounds as Claire and her handsome prince travel from the warmth of her family to the homeland of the toy soldiers. For tickets, visit www.thesmithcenter.com. And don't forget, the ID requirements are changing beginning October the 1st, 2020. You'll need a REAL ID compliant license or other acceptable forms of ID, such as valid passport and US military ID, to fly within the United States. So to learn more about flying with a REAL ID, visit TSA.gov/REAL-ID. And there's a call for artwork. The City of Las Vegas seeks to purchase multiple two-dimensional artworks to be permanently placed within the newly renovated Las Vegas Senior Center located at 451 East Bonanza Road. Artists are encouraged to submit artworks for consideration, which directly represent the vintage Las Vegas. To apply, log in or create a new account using the City of Las Vegas Fine Art Exhibit Opportunity site and select Call for Artwork, Las Vegas Senior Center. And I also just wish you a happy holiday greetings, wonderful Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah for all that are out there, Happy Kwanzaa. And don't forget, you can always follow us on Twitter at CedricCreer, Instagram, Councilman Creer, Facebook, Councilman CedricCreer. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Councilman Creer. Councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I just have two events coming up in Ward Three, and I think that we have something to visually show everyone, so I'm waiting for them to come up. There they are. Please join us this Friday, December 20th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the East Las Vegas Community Center, where we're going to have very special partners in this work. Come and get our hearts ready for Christmas with a special visit from Santa Claus. We're gonna have toys to give away to our community members and fabulous circus acts and holiday musics and some goodies that are being provided by my office, so please join us there at 250 Northeastern. And if you need more information, call us at 702-229-5428. I hope to see everyone this Friday. And then the last Christmas event that we'll host at the East Las Vegas Community Center is on Christmas Eve, Tuesday, December 24th, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and this has been a tradition in our community for, I think, over 15 years. I really need to get the accuracy of how long it's been happening, but I know former newspaper owner of El Mundo, Eddie Escobedo Sr., was the one who started Navidad en el Barrio, and it's basically Christmas in the barrio. And it's another toy giveaway for young kiddos and families who might be struggling with making Christmas one that's happy for our kids, and so we're just encouraging everybody that needs that support to come out on the day before Christmas, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at East Las Vegas Community Center at 250 Northeastern Avenue. Come celebrate the holidays with this special event. And with that, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, all the holidays that are coming in this season, and we will not be here to also wish you a happy, healthy, and productive 2020, and I hope that you spend it in good spirits and surrounded by all those people who love you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Diaz. Councilman Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Councilman Knutson?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Happy holidays, and I want to just remind everyone that there's still time to visit the Opportunity Village Magical Forest. It's operating daily until Christmas Eve in the heart of Ward One. Thank you.
And Councilwoman Seaman?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just want to let people know that our Small Business Sundays have been very successful, and we want to get the word out about your business, so please contact us at ward2@lasvegasnevada.gov or call us at 702-229-2420. And we hope that you'll share your holiday with some great animals up for pet adoptions. We're gonna bring them up on the screen. Okay, then we're gonna skip through that, and I'm gonna say have a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy New Year. See you next year.
Thank you. And we, tomorrow, our next Golden Knights game, which is very, very important, which is to support our Golden Knights, is Thursday, December 19th. The game starts at 7:00 p.m. Pacific Time. There we go. Okay, there's our, there's our Go Knights Go. Okay, and then we are still in the month of December, and our Christmas Fantasy Forest is still going on strong. Every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, Santa Claus is there. This Friday, he will be there from 5:00 to 7:00. Saturday, he'll be there from 2:00 to 5:00, and Sunday as well. What we're doing this Saturday is very important. We're going to be giving away a lot of Christmas presents to our children in Ward Six, so please join me at our Floyd Lamp Park this weekend to visit with Santa, take pictures, and pick up your Christmas presents. And then also, coming in the new year, we are going to be having Meet with Michelle on January 10th for some hot cocoa, coffee, and cookies from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. That's a Friday, January 10th, to start our new year together at our YMCA office. We have some great news. We have one of our missing children located, Paul Chavez, who is 14. He was a male. He has been located, thank goodness. Now we are looking for Christina Gibson. She's 13 years old. She's a female. She is African-American. She's 5'5". She weighs 125 pounds, black hair, brown eyes. Christina was last seen in the area of North Las Vegas. It is unknown where she is right now, so please, if any of you see beautiful Christina, call the North Las Vegas Police Department at 702-633-9111, or Nevada Childseekers at We also have parental abduction. The infant was last seen with a non-constodial parent, mother, and may be in need of medical attention, last seen in the area of North Jones and West Duncan Drive. The mother is 5'11". She's about 180 pounds, has brown hair and brown eyes. If you have any information about this infant, the infant's name is Willie Thomas, the mother is Katie Mosley. For the non-constodial parent, please call Las Vegas Metro Police at 702-828-3111, or Nevada Childseekers at 702-458-7009. As we work with our Corridor of Hope and our homeless success stories, we have one, we are happy to announce, and I don't have any pictures, but we are happy to announce that just a few weeks ago, the collaborative efforts from the Courtyard case managers, which are M-O-R-E, our more outreach teams, and partnered landlords achieved rewarding outcomes for families at risk and families experiencing homelessness. One of these cases involves an amazing couple who was working toward obtaining their own housing. Soon after they received help, the couple welcomed their first child, Lituna Falatikvag. Due to this help received by the Courtyard, including working with their case manager, the family received approval to have custody of their newborn baby. These homeless success stories just really warm my heart. And with that, we have Hanukkah coming up, so I want to make sure you guys have a happy, happy, happy Hanukkah and a Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year. And for all of my colleagues, please do not forget your Christmas flowers and your Christmas presents. Merry Christmas to our staff. Thank you to our marshals, to all of our staff, you guys. We couldn't do what we do without each and every one of you, and everything you do, we appreciate. And with that, we will be adjourning the meeting.